Councilmember Bokey to you.
Councilmember Anderson, councilmember Bell, councilmember Bokey, councilmember Bran Center, councilmember Laura Sella, deputy mayor Moss, and Mayor Wayland. Item A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of October nine, two thousand and twenty-three. Item B, motion number two thousand and twenty-three dash nine seven, authorizing settlement of Pierce County Superior Court cause number two-three dash two dash zero six five six zero dash nine between the city of Lakewood and heirs and devisees of Edith Josephine Takamoto. And item C, items filed in the office of the city clerk, including item one, lodging tax advisory committee meeting minutes of September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. Two, American Lake, Lake Management District number one advisory committee meeting minutes of May nine, two thousand and twenty-three. And item three, community services advisory board meeting minutes of September two thousand and twenty-three.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and councilmembers, actually four items. And so I'm just going to turn this one over. The first one, park sign update over to our Parks and Recreation Director, Mary Dodsworth.
All right. Here they were given and the process that we've been steps along the way that we've taken to get where we're at today. Project criteria, this is what we were tasked with when we were given the project. First was for the individual park signs. The budget shall not exceed thirty thousand dollars to build and install per sign. The design and science shall reference the current city gateway monuments and also kiosk monument recently constructed at the Fort Silicon Park. Scalable, scalable design so that the different sizes of signs that can work in different environments and different parks. So it's not just one size fits all, easy and economical to maintain. This was a big thing right now. I know the signs that are there are a little expensive to build and also to maintain. So looking at something that's easier and cheaper to build. Durable, long lasting, be out there for a while, and that the designs should include city colors. Just to give you some background on the process, on December two thousand and twenty-two, I had the project kickoff meeting and a site survey of the park identification signs. And then in July two thousand and twenty-two, we did a survey of the Parkway finding and sign, Parkway finding signage at Fort Silicon Park and locations of the EMC or reader boards. Then September eighth, we presented to the stakeholder group for feedback and recommendations. And then September twenty-six, we presented to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for recommendations and feedback. This is the list of the stakeholder team and list of the individuals on the Park and Recreation Advisory Board that helped us get to where we are today. It's just getting into the designs and the concept development, give you a little background and kind of research that went into it. Key thing was our site survey, getting out onsite, really seeing where these signs are going to go, what the environment feels like, background. Anything that could really play a role into what the signs look like or also could influence design of the signs, what's working, what's not, and where do we go from there? Also looking at Pacific Northwest modern architecture, we want to make these signs look like they're modern and progressive, not dated and old. So give you more of a current look and also looking at a timeless look that works with the area that they're located. All right, concepts. The first concept we have, we looked at incorporating the city blue with the, and the natural wood posts. The shape of the sign, we had a top curve that shows more of a welcoming and inviting look. The background is a perforated metal. This is so, say, somebody, we noticed some of the signs had spray paint and things like that. People are less likely to put spray paint on these because it goes right through it and it's not really visible. The front end with the, the name of the parks would be, would be a vinyl on aluminum. So right now I know it's like etched in concrete, which is, you know, it's a little expensive to do. So having just some nice vinyl that's applied nicely with color on there be cheaper and economical. We also have three different options of size, a small, medium, and small and large horizontal and more of a vertical option. So depending on the location of the signs and where you can put them, it works for the different environments. We also looked at Parkway finding, the continuation of that curve on top as well as the wood post follows through. Keep consistency and visual look from as you enter the park and when you, when you're directed, so you know you're within the correct area. Also looking at including international symbols on these signs, someone may not, English may not be their first language, the symbols can help them find their way around. And then just from, you know, different options for some vehicular parking and then pedestrian. And on the pedestrian, we have some timed distance. So if, you know, someone wants to walk, they'll understand how far it is and then maybe keep them more likely to wander and explore the park. Here's just some scenes with the signs and to give you an idea how they would look in the environment. And here's some three dimensionals, just to give you an idea of the shape and form. Concept two, this also picks up on some of the natural elements of the wood and also the color. The shape of the sign is influenced by the mountains within the city of Lakewood logo. So we wanted, you know, see if we could represent that in some way. This option includes the symbols on the park identification signs and the city logo as well. And then the angle that was used in the parking identification signs kind of follows through on the wayfinding signs. It keeps a consistent visual look. Signs in the environment. Here's the three Ds. This one has a more of a circular perforation through it rather than the square. It's just kind of a different look. Concept three. Concept three, we really were influenced by the wave and lake elements of the area. So we said, you know, giving it sort of that the wave curve at the bottom of the base. And then using a wave pattern that would be repeated through there. Also, we still really liked the look of the natural woods, incorporated that onto the sign with the name of the park. That's your way finding that that curve falls at the bottom of the sign that's shaped. So that's a consistent visual connection. See environment. And there's the three dimensional drawings. Concept four, this concept, we looked at using the mountain shape and, you know, if there's a way to combine the mountain shape and the water. So the top is the mountain shape where it's green and at the bottom is the, is the curve, the wave that's represented there. And then we had the wood post to give that natural look and out into the, to the design of the sign. The wayfinding picks up, you know, the colors follow through a little more of a simplification of from the park signs, but there's still that visual cue and connection that you have when you look at the signs. And here's them in the environment. And there's some three dimensional drawings. So concept five took a little different approach with this one with the task of, you know, seeing can we connect it to the city, the city gateway? So we look at the colors and the materials that were used on there and reuse that into the park identification sign. So the brown gets picked up on the structure and the the linear look and feel of the sign is picked up there, the tan and the brown, and then some slight red detail that we found in the stone. Then the stone bases are used on the larger signs here to really create that connection to the gateways. Then the rectangular and linearity is continued to the wayfinding signs and again use the international symbols. There's the signs in the environment. And there's some three dimensions. All right, last one for you. This one again picks up on the influence of the city gateway, using the brown and the tan to create that visual connection and using stone for all options here. And then picking up into the wayfinding, we use some metal poles here and it had kind of had the similar tone of the stone. So trying to reconnect that through a more of an economical option. Scenes. And then three dimensions.
So as you can see, you know, with, with, with my team coming out, taking a look at the environment, making sure that something can actually work successfully out there. So with a good, successful wayfinding system, it's good, strong color, shape, form. So you can visitors. Tourism, when they come out here, they see something that they can recognize and get information without having a lot of anxiety. So anybody who's ever driven a long stretch of highway and don't see anything and no information, you just build up anxiety. So these are the theories that we brought into even the park system. So once you get some visible recognition out there, you feel a little more calm, feel a little more safe. So with that said, by doing the studies of both the, 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 the main gateway colors and system as opposed to the city colors of this environment, it has to stand out. So, so, so we wanted to show council how, how, how we played out and make sure we explored all angles.
So then just to go over the feedback we received from the stakeholders and the park boards. For concept one through four here, they liked the combination, the blue and the wood. They felt that it was natural and organic. It was, it was modern, inviting and timeless. Timeless was a big thing that kind of came back for a lot of these meetings. So that's what they felt with this. They also like concept one was connected to the service club sign that's currently out there right now. And then the one thing they did not like was concept four, the green, they weren't a fan of the green. So for, they like for concepts five and six, they liked that it visually connected to the existing gateway, but they felt that the brown in the stone was too historical, not modern enough and not special enough. They also had some concerns of the stone not being as economical and costly. They liked the, these options better since they're more economical with the vinyl, the perforation and things like that. So with all that said, concept one was the recommended direction from the stakeholder team and the parks board.
Which stands out in the environment a little bit, you know, more prevalent and be more instructive out there.
Yep. All right. And just, I'm going to. And then so for some next steps, once we get a, after this meeting, we provide a, provide a schedule of the remaining tasks. We'll do the design development of the chosen concepts. We'll finalize all materials, sizes, specifications and everything like that that goes along with the chosen concept. Work on design intent drawings, which are pretty much specification drawings, dimensions, material specifications, fabrication processes, things that you can use to go to public bid for these signs. We'll work on the sign location plan and message schedule where the signs will be located, what they'll say. We're also working the cost estimate. Once that's all done, so you know, make sure it works with the allocated funds. We'll include demolition to the existing signs and no funds are currently allocated to the park wayfinding signs, just the park identification to be clear. And then after that, we'll determine fabrication, install and put it out for public bid. We also got tasked with looking, you know, after this got looking at Fort Silicon Park, the main entry identification. Since this is more of a regional park, it's, and a lot of people come from the area, we wanted to make this a little more grand, a little more welcoming. Additionally, there was a new roundabout that was built there. So thought that was a great opportunity to really highlight the park. Well, we, we developed additional concepts that are related to the park identification signs. So whatever, whatever gets chosen, we're going to make sure it works with that direction. You know, some of the options you can see here from before, you know, picking up on the blue and using the wood. And there's also some options that relate to the existing gateway and those designs. One of the things these also include are some banners. We know there's a lot of special events and things that happen here. So I want to give you the opportunity to promote or help people identify those events going on. With all of these concepts of, one of the things we heard back was the, the kind of the arch on concept five there. Wasn't a fan of that just because of a lot of the larger trucks and things that may be coming in there and they could hit it or opportunity for that. So that was not, not liked by the stakeholder group and the parks board. Additionally, similar comments, they liked the blue in the wood, felt it was inviting, timeless, more modern. And the large stone entry that were connected to the existing gateway, they felt wasn't really special enough and felt too old. So with that said, this was the chosen, chosen direction by, or recommended direction by the stakeholder team and parks board. They liked this option because it was simplistic, but it also helps put emphasis on the view of the park as you enter. It's not the sign that's just taking all the information that you really see the park and highlight it as you enter, but also helps you know where you're, when you're arriving. For this one, next steps, again, we'll provide a schedule of remaining tasks after this meeting to the team. The design development will visually connect to the chosen park and identification signage concept, work on the design attend drawings. And we'll get a cost estimate and there's currently no funds allocated to the park main entry. And then lastly, we had the reader boards. This is just the design we looked at. Again, very, you know, kind of being consistent here, picking up on the, you know, the wood and the blue and the curved top for concept one. Giving it a little more of a substantial base. It seems to be larger electronics in there that, you know, we want to give them a heavier, more substantial base. Concept two, more of a square, but still picking up on that blue and the sort of wood looking elements. Concept three, picking up on the angle and looking at maybe sort of a simpler structure to hold the signs. And then concept four, picking up on the existing gateway themes. So again, for here, they, they recommended concept one. They really liked how it related to the, the recommended park identification sign and they felt there was consistent look and feel for this. So lastly, next steps, provide a, provide a schedule. We'll determine the final sign locations, work on the design intense and get a cost estimate. So those are mainly the next steps. Here's the, here's the grouping of all the recommended concept directions and then any questions? So.
Mr. Anderson? My recollection is correct, I had to leave the park sport meeting before it was over, but there was some question on concept six as to the placement of the lettering that people felt uncomfortable with the fact that it was. You know, for example, trying to read a Lakewood, city of Lakewood on your left, when the base of the letters is on your left, caused somebody to look to the left and turn their head to the right. And then it's very unnaturally, maybe, maybe there was a way to do it.
Yeah.
Do it vertically instead of.
One of our, yeah, one of our park board members did bring that up. And so we were getting the shape and the concept. And so they wanted to take a look at whether, would there be other ways of stacking it so that you had a different way of viewing it, but you are going by it at twenty-five or so miles an hour. And so you're kind of just brushing by. So at least if it had the same feel, look, and you knew that you were entering someone special, someplace special and on the wayfinding around there. So we're going to look at the lettering a little bit more. But that did come up during the, the discussion phase of the process.
My, my only comment was I thought that the parks board did a very good job of winnowing things down and considering alternatives. It took it very seriously. Not everybody had the same initial impression, but everybody came out with a strong consensus. Mr. Laura Sella?
Thank you. For the park identification signant, I noticed that concept two had the symbols at the bottom of it for folks who may not necessarily have English as their first language. Was there consideration to add those to concept one or would that make it too crowded?
We had, we had quite a discussion about that. And so what we talked about was on the entry sign, not having those icons on there because they're really identifiers of a space, but utilizing those icons within the park wayfinding to help people understand picnics or shelters. So yeah, so we did show them initially on the first sign, concept one. But through the discussion, they said for just the entry part, leave it very simple, plain. The one suggestion that did come is the possibility of maybe putting the address on the bottom of the sign so that people know where they are because they don't always know that, but to leave the icons for the wayfinding or for maybe some of the specialty signs within the park.
That's a good idea for a first responder, having the address at the, at the gateway. And we use that for other park systems and to just for making sure that emergency responses identified.
And when you say icon, you're talking about the actual city seal logo or?
No, we're talking about like the international sign for picnicking, fishing trails. Yeah.
Okay. So I had a couple of questions. Just when I look at concept one, pick one of the signs. And I know we've got a budget we want to stick with, but I look at that and I think it can't possibly cost thirty thousand dollars. Right? And, and so a couple of things come to mind. If we're going to choose concept one, is, is there something a little bit more durable or a little bit more dynamic than vinyl letters on the blue metal? In other words, can you have maybe stainless steel or maybe powder coated aluminum, you know, with little bunchions or whatever that pull out the letters about an inch or something that gives it some dimension?
The, we certainly can look at different options. The vinyl came up as a suggestion and we hadn't really thought of that before because of all of the signal boxes that we've done because it is quite durable and graffiti resistant. When we were originally proposing the concept, it was going to be a metal type sign like the gateways, right? That does have written letters. So the idea now is to get the sign, the design, the color, the focus, and then we'll be the final design. Because we have thirty thousand doesn't mean we need to spend thirty thousand. We still need to demo the signs and install the signs. But if we did get to where there was some efficiency of scale from producing several at a time, any resources that we didn't spend could maybe go into the wayfinding because we don't have resources for that. So, so that's what we'd be looking at. But the idea tonight is, is just to confirm the, get consensus on confirming the shape and the size. And then we'll go back into, again, as I said, the fabrication process to, to then to make those signs.
Was there any discussion about lighting, like LED type lighting on any of the major gateway, not the wayfinding, but just the major park gateway signs? Again, because we're trying to be consistent, all of the entry signs to the city, although they look different, at least they have their backlit.
Yeah, there is power at most of the parks because of irrigation. So that could be considered for uplighting to support those signs.
Or just the backlit letters like we have in the other gateway signs.
It's a little robust for that little of a sign, but we can take a look at how that might work.
What's that?
Yeah, the parks are close at dark.
True.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was gonna say you wanna, you wanna watch. I, you wanna watch that with, if it's not open late at night, say with the signs on it, people could think it's open and then go to it. So there can be, we, we, we caution sometimes with that.
My only other thought on Concept One on the reader board sign. You know, if we're gonna have the city logo on all the other signs where the curve is, I would recommend we try to do the logo on that one as well. Increase the curve a little bit and get the logo so it's consistent. Last question on maintenance and durability. The use of the wood posts. Long term, is it durable? Does it maintain well? I know on Angle Lane, we had that really nice concrete sort of base and you've got the wood sign and the metal looks beautiful, has a northwest sort of modern feel to it. How well does it hold up over time?
They're treated posts. They hold up, they hold up fine.
Okay. Yeah, wo- wo- wood if treated right um before install, um, very durable. National Park loves it. You can find wood, you know, replacement. The way Tangram designs is to stay very uh uh economical. So, so a lot of these is uh construction available, available materials. So everything is done in a way where they can be dismantled very quickly and replaced with certain parts. When it gets so permanent, like kind of what you have now.
Um, you know, more difficult.
Yeah, yeah. It, it costs more just to remove it.
Are you planning on using Gary Oakwood, Mary?
Councilmember Bill?
Thank you, thank you. I think you did a really good job of marrying what the committee was looking for. Um, you know, our signs that we have and then where we'd like to move to in the future. So I think that this is a great bridge. One suggestion on the um Fort Silicon, the main entry. Add a curve to those versus the edge to tie in with everything else and to be consistent, I think. Other than that, and then definitely the logo on the reader board, I think would be just a great tie in. But just adding that curve on there, I think would tie everything together.
Good comment.
Thank you.
Kind of like seeing that for Silicon Park one. Okay, got it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That makes some sense. Good. Well, it looks like you guys did a great work and, and had a good, robust review by the stakeholders as well as the PRAM board. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or feedback other than, looks like I go with some of the tweaks we talked about? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I was just curious as to how treatable is the wood? Is the wood post, how, what's the maintenance on that?
Uh, well, they'd be pre-treated before installation. And then um, the great thing about it is just that um you can sand things off if you needed to and they're, they're hardy. You don't, we don't have trouble. In fact, um, the service club sign, we haven't had trouble with at all. Doesn't have the wood posts, but um we have wood posts all throughout the park. So.
Graffiti can be easily removed. Thank you.
Well, thanks again. Appreciate it. Our pleasure. Anything else on that or? So I hear uh through the grapevine that locations for potential reader boards might eventually end up in front of us. Is that gonna happen this century or?
Yeah, well, um, our communications manager is uh taking the lead on that reader boards. We just helped her along the way with the design elements. And so she is gonna be planning to bring you um some location considerations. Once we determine, you know, how many we're gonna do, the idea is probably replace the police station one because that way it would match with the rest of them. And it's really, really, really outdated technology. And then the idea is where should the next ones be? You know, is the purpose besides promoting and, and talking to our, our citizens, but also is there emergency management? Should it be in some area that is more isolated, like the Silicon area or um Mountain Springbrook area? Is it where uh people will stop, where they really get a chance to look at the moving, you know, information, you know, the one at the police station provides great information, but you're going past it at a pretty good clip. So um we'll be looking at those intersections, which I think they did the research before. And I think that the communications manager has gotten updates on those.
Oh, great.
So she'll be able to bring that information for you. Oh, here she comes. And I'm not sure. I don't think it's on the agenda yet, but it'll be coming to you soon so that we can decide. We really need to know how many we can build as well, because when we get the cost estimate, we can say, oh, we have enough resources to do one and a half or maybe two and a half or, you know, or three. Uh, so we'll be able to bring that information your way.
Great. All right.
That's this century.
It is gonna be this century. Thanks. Yeah, appreciate it. Okay, very good. So now we have Mister Vargas is gonna lead us through the review of the proposed twenty twenty-four changes and updates to the federal, state and county legislative agenda and policy manual. Uh, as folks may recall, we reviewed this at some length in a prior study session. And I believe these are updates based upon our feedback.
That is correct, Mayor. So, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Michael Vargas here, uh, joined by our state lobbyist, Michellei Helder to review the state federal and county legislative materials. Um, these materials have gone before the council at your October ninth retreat. Um, so just for some context, council approved red lines from that session have been inputted into the documents. Whereas um council input from these born from the session are included in yellow. And starting on page ninety-one of your packet tonight, you'll find a handy cover sheet that um lists all the changes along with document page numbers. So to start off, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Shelley Helder to go over these state legislative uh material changes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, so on your state legislative agenda, based on the feedback that you all provided, we made a couple of changes to the public safety section. Um, we refined the language on vehicular pursuits to emphasize that stolen vehicles are being used to commit other crimes. And that's um one of the things we want to see addressed. Um, and then we added a fifth item to um call out juvenile crime and specifically requesting amending state law to allow for law enforcement interviews with guardian consent. So those are the changes on the legislative agenda. In the policy manual, we had a handful of changes based on your feedback. Um, the first is in the Clover Creek floodplain section. Um, we changed the language to uh signal that the city is um eventually going to seek outside funding. Basically making the language clear that there's gonna need to be outside support, but not specifying where that, where that expectation is coming from. Um, under the public safety section, the language is updated to reflect what we talked about on the legislative agenda. Um, again, the language on vehicular pursuits is more specific. Um, that it is the intent to address stolen vehicles that are used in committing other crimes. The section on juvenile crime, the language is expanded. Um, several, several items there based on the feedback that you all provided. Um, and then the geographic equity in discharge from state facilities. Um, this language is more clearly specifies that adult family homes in Pierce County are disproportionately serving the long-term civil commitment patients. And so it's that adult family homes um should be incentivized in underserved areas. And finally, we added an item um requesting state coordination for federal military affairs. And those are all the changes to the state policy manual. In addition to the legislative agenda and the policy manual, we have our one-pagers. And the items on those one-pagers are each reflected, um, are the changes that we made. The priority items are reflected on those one-pagers.
Questions or comments on the language changes, council members? I, I note we added the youth education piece, which I appreciate based on our discussion last time. Yeah, I, I just was looking at page nineteen about the use of the word stymied. I wonder if there's a better word. We want to ensure the criminal behavior is stymied. I get it. Or curtailed or, or addressed. Yeah, disincentivized, whatever you want to say. In the last sentence where we say educating at-risk youth and their families about social services and about the consequences of criminal activity early on, the city expects that youth criminal activity will be prevented. The city would hope that youth criminal activity would be curtailed. I don't know if we can, I mean, we can certainly hope and expect all sorts of things, but uh I think that the key is, it would be great to be completely prevented. But I think the reality is if we make a difference, youth criminal activity will certainly be curtailed or minimized, maybe. I don't know about prevented. I want to be realistic here. That's just me. But any other thoughts or comments, folks, on that? Did you have another comment, Mister LaRocelle? Yeah, go ahead.
And then the comment, it may not necessarily involve our language, but it's just wondering if other in regards to the equity and discharge from state facilities, if other municipalities within Pierce County are also pushing back on that? And if we know that there's some consistency there?
That's a good question. As far as I'm aware, I don't know of any other jurisdictions that are um making a similar request.
You just something? Okay. Deputy Mayor, do you have anything else on that? You must have done magic with your wordsmithing, Mister Vargas. Thank you. Yeah. Appreciate your work. Thank you both. Ms. Helder, what do you think? What's it gonna be like down there this year? Any, are you, any crystal ball gazing for us?
Uh, I definitely can't predict the future, but I know it's gonna be a busy sixty days.
Will they, do you think they'll even look at the public safety changes that we're advocating, as you know, with the other mayors and lead folks in the cities and towns here in Pierce County?
You know, I think um, I think it's gonna be really um influenced by initiatives that are in the process of being collected, our signatures that are being collected on current initiatives.
Oh, for which ones specifically?
There's, I believe there's seven different initiatives to the people um that are collecting signatures right now. And if any of those make it, there is one on a couple. Actually, there's a few different on public safety. And so if any of those have sufficient signatures collected, then the legislature will either have to make changes to those laws or let those initiatives go before the vote of the people next November. So that will be influential.
Got it. Nothing on state senators carrying weapons through airports, anything like that?
I do not expect anything about that.
Just checking. Mister Anderson?
Yeah, so he, so he walks through and I have clear and TSA pre-check and I get stuck for fifteen minutes waiting for a secondary check, cause TSA isn't staffed. So um, I just came back from California, which is a, a mess in a lot of ways. Uh, and uh, I, I want to commend the council and our, our assistants down there for pressing issues. A pretty good editorial in San Diego County about municipalities being the last bastion of sanity and resisting some things. And one of the things they had going down there was that uh during COVID, there was a, a referendum uh to eliminate cash bail. Eliminate cash bail. Uh, Prop forty-five failed by a seventeen point margin. And public sentiment, according to polls nationally, is less in favor of that now. They see some of the results in some jurisdictions than it was in twenty twenty with Prop twenty-five. But in spite of that, there are self-described progressive prosecutors who are refusing to send their deputies to court to ask for bail. They are ignoring law because it doesn't suit their political whim. Uh, and they're ignoring the will of the people. So I think that, you know, it's up to municipalities to push back when we see things that don't seem to work in our community. Another one was ironically, the uh imposition of housing requirements on communities that had no demand. Actually, we're losing people and they're telling them we have to plan and build so many units. They're going, why? Uh, and so we're seeing the same things, because we're borrowing a lot of California's ideas up here. Uh, it, I think it's important that there's a voice. Because despite of what you might see or hear in some of the media, I think we're representing the majority of the people that we were, that were elected to uh speak for. So. That's my soapbox.
Very good. Thanks, Sheldon. Thank you again. Appreciate your work on this. And thank you for um listening to our feedback and making the changes. We, we appreciate that. Very good. So next we have a uh review of the multifamily tax exemption code amendments. And I believe we've got Ms. Newton for that. Unless Mister Vargas, you're gonna dabble in economic development now or?
Well, we do have a bit of changes to the county and federal policy manual. Um.
Uh, we just did the state. Okay, go ahead.
Everyone's go pathetic. I'm happy to.
Yeah. Well. I thought you zipped through that, but go ahead.
Yes, um, I'll make this fairly quick. Um, looking at your county policy manual.
Okay.
Um, that's starting on page one twenty-four of your packet. A lot of the changes are simply to align language change in the state manual. Um, although there are two items I'd like to draw your attention to, um, that are substantive. Uh, looking at page thirteen of your document, that would be the opioid settlement funds item. Um, this was a new item at the um direction of council to really call attention to the opioid settlement funds that the city is receiving. Looking at that item, um, the first section there really outlines, sets the stage of what exactly the opioid, what exactly is the opioid epidemic and how Pierce County is set to receive about twenty-nine million dollars from in funding from various opioid settlements over the next seventeen years. Uh, the next section there outlines that the city is to directly receive approximately one million um in the twenty twenty-two to twenty thirty-eight timeline. And that the city will work with its community services advisory board to best determine how to use this funding within our own community. And this point is um really driven home in the last section on the next page. Um, that really outlines that the city would like to keep its full discretion on how to spend the city's allocated settlement funds to address the opioid epidemic in the Lakewood community. As the Pierce County Opioid Abatement Council, PCOAC, has no authority to direct expenditures of member jurisdictions. So really driving that point home that we would like to retain control of these funds for our community here in Lakewood to address the opioid epidemic.
Of course, that doesn't preclude our human services advisory board from perhaps considering a regional provider. It, it makes sense for Lakewood, right?
Correct, correct. And this, within our discretion, yep. And the other substantive change would be on page fifteen of the document. Um, and that's to the juvenile crime item here. Um, the first section is really aligned with the state um policy manual item. Um, although this um county policy manual item really um dives a bit deeper into the youth education component. Um, for example, references the fact that um youth education that prevents criminal activity upstream should also include intervention of at-risk youth and their families by connections to social services at early age, um such as the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department's Family Support Partnership Program. Uh, which this program is a one-stop shop for connecting uh families to social services at the county and state level. Um, to include um such as parenting classes, workforce development, and also an entry point into Apple Health and WIC programs. Although um, the next uh section here really points out that even after offending youth um are in contact with the juvenile court, um the county-owned juvenile court, Raymond Hall, that youth education, both in terms of consequences of criminal behavior and education about social services should continue um throughout their interaction at Raymond Hall. Um, with the caveat, though, that um the youth justice philosophy deployed at Raymond Hall emphasizes keeping offending youth connected to family, community, and education economic opportunities. Yet, the city recognized that oftentimes a family setting that lacks proper social support and opportunities may in fact be the source of negative influence that drives youth criminal behavior. So to wrap up this section, by both educating at-risk youth and their families about social services and about the consequences of criminal activity. And about the consequences of criminal activity early on, the city expects that youth criminal um activity um should be prevented over time.
Minimize, curtail, something like that.
Yep.
I'd love to see prevented, but.
Yeah.
Realistic, yeah.
We'll uh, we'll make those changes there. Um, and the rest of the um I change is really just aligned with the state policy manual. So, to go to the federal policy manual, the only change there is delineated by the cover sheet is that the. Defense Community Infrastructure Program item uh now. Um explicitly calls out the city's support for the Lakewood Water District's DCIP funding request to address JBLM originating PFAS. Contamination of aquifers serving the city, so signaling our support. And that completes the proposed changes.
Thank you. Any questions, comments for the direction? Again, thank you for the work and for addressing the, the changes and keeping on, on task on this. We appreciate that.
Yep, thank you.
Great. Okay, Ms. Newton, you're up. Along with Mr. Buwer, I presume, right? The tag team, dynamic duo. This is a significant piece of work, so. And a lot of work, as you've indicated.
Well, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm gonna go ahead and start, uh, and my purpose here is to. Basically give an overview of the entire program because we do have members of the council who may not be that familiar with it. How it came about and where it is today and where, where is it going? So it, it originally was started as a tool for cities to promote economic development. And the original legislation was adopted by the state in nineteen ninety-five. And uh, the purpose again was to uh concentrate development in urban cities that were, that needed revitalization. And one of the key sponsors to this legislation was the city of Tacoma. So they brought it forward, and then in two thousand two, Lakewood said, if Tacoma's doing it, we should do it as well. So we basically adopted their own ordinance in two thousand two and created. Two uh T I U C C zones and then later a third in Springbrook. And then from there, uh, our first projects began appearing in two thousand and six. And on the books, I'll use that term, we have about six hundred and fourteen units total. And only a very small percentage have been set aside as affordable, I would say. I have my, my notes here, less than ten percent. But it's probably less than that, I would say probably on the order of maybe twenty. So people in Lakewood, developers in Lakewood have chosen to use the original ten-year tax period. Now eight-year for construction of market-rate housing. Now, developers who participate in the program receive a property tax exemption for a specific period of time, either eight for market rate. Or twelve, if you're going to set aside the units for affordable housing. And I'd be, want to be very clear, it's low income and moderate income. It is not very low income. Uh, and I'll get into this a little bit more, but through the years, the state has amended it a couple, a couple more times to allow for people who use the eight-year program. To extend it for twelve years and then also to propose a twelve-year, a twenty-year program in certain circumstances. The way it works is the building itself is exempt for property taxes for that period of time, but the land is not. The assessor has picked up on this and does appraisals at the appropriate time through the final and, and uh. Draft conditional certificates to make sure that the property is assessed properly prior to the construction occurring. Uh, the exemption can either assist in our, and from our perspective, either in financing market rate projects. Or in general, leading to cost savings for developers, which theoretically can be passed on to tenants in the form of lower rents. The program has expanded over the years. The cities do have the option to define the terms and conditions of the program within their jurisdiction. And provided they meet some of the basic state requirements. Uh, over the years, it's also been allowed for more cities to uh expand and participate in the program. And while it has produced thousands of residential units in the urban areas and the Greater Puget Sound, there has been criticism. Some argue that it's results in loss of tax revenues for cities. Or that it doesn't do enough to address housing needs of the very low-income households. Other issues, and Becky's going to speak to this, is the monitoring and compliance part, which has become more and more complicated. Um, and it requires the developers to adhere to affordability, but places the city staff in a position where if they're not, then we are them. In the position to move forward to remove the tax exemption. And that might get discussed a little bit later in the presentation. Uh, the biggest issues have been predominantly housing problems in the cit- uh, greater Seattle area that has led to most recent amendments, which I believe were in twenty twenty-one. And now we're bringing forward this for discussion this evening. The council did receive a report on this in January of twenty twenty-three. We just have not had the opportunity to bring it forward until now. And with that, I'm gonna turn the, uh, the presentation over to Becky. Who's gonna talk about some of the major recommendations in this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Buwer. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. If we can refer to uh pages one fifty-six to one fifty-seven of your packet, I'm gonna. Go over uh some of the main recommendations. I'll not review every single one, but the key ones that uh you should. Probably pay attention to in your packet. Uh, number one. Uh, recommendation by the Planning Commission was to increase the minimum number of units from four to fifteen. Units, and that's primarily um to make it a more viable project uh for the projects going forward and easier for staff. And so we're um raising the bar on that requirement. And then I will uh move on to uh number four on the recommendation in your packet. Which is uh to provide a twenty-year MFT program in the Lakewood Station District, as well as the Springbrook. Residential target areas and um. But to prohibit it in the twenty-year MFT uh program in the downtown residential target area. As you know, um, this way may offset revenues should we decide to move forward with a tax increment area in the downtown. Number five is to maintain the eight-year MFT. That has been by far the most popular program. It's more of an economic development program to encourage uh development in all of our RTA areas. And um it has helped uh to grow some of the residential here in the city of Lakewood. And then moving on to number seven, initiate an MF, MFT administrative. Administrative review process, so that's a big uh change uh to what we are currently doing. And we're proposing that it be approved by the director through the city manager. But this uh with city council provisos, which include, um, the city council still would approve. The contracts for the MFT, uh, council would still review updates to any of the, the conditional certificates. Also, community development director through the city manager approves the conditional and final certificates. And the community development director through the city manager reports to, to the city council on all conditional and final certificates. That are issued and related terms and conditions.
If we can stop there for just a minute for some clarification, right now, when we take a MFT application to the city council. You're given the conditional certificate and the contract. What we're proposing is you obtain approval of the contract, which talks about where the priority is located, the number of units, whether there's an affordability clause. The number of years, you know, that level of detail, but then leaves the conditional certificate to staff. I would tell the council that the conditional certificate and the final certificate are very akin to approving a preliminary and final. Matt, a flat map. And so you're looking at all the, the details specific to the development. One of the things we run into problems with conditional certificates is we get into issues with design. And people change the design, and then that means we have to go back to the city council to get approval. And here what we're asking is those level of details that are requesting that they stay with city staff. So that's different than what we're currently doing. I just wanted to bring that out to the council's uh knowledge. Also to reviewing the contract details, approving that before we get into this project, as well as the conditional certificate. So that you have a, you feel comfortable with what we're doing.
One comment on that with regard to the design criteria, staff is already guided by the subrare plans. That include design criteria that we've already approved, right?
Yes, so the, the, the big, one of the big issues, for example, is accessibility parking.
Right.
They forget to think about that and the level of detail that is required for approval. And so that always comes up to bite people, as well as in the future, you'll be looking, getting EV parking state stalls.
Right. Do we include that in our design criteria that implies?
Not yet. It's in the building code right now, and you're gonna see revisions that in the future say that you have. Right now, you have to provide for EV stations and a place in which to keep the equipment. In the future, you're gonna have, you're gonna be saying, X number of spaces will have EV parking with all of the conduit and everything installed and ready to use.
Okay, very good, Mr. Boki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this changed to administrative approval. Is that the more common practice with cities or what, what is the more common practice?
Everybody wants to go to administrative approval. And when we began this before the planning commission, we thought that that was the best way to go. Because all the developers say, you know, look, we don't want to go to the city council for approval on something like this. But when you start taking a look at the intricacies of state law, on appeal, the multifamily tax exemption application or. Uh, you, you don't uh make, meet the final certificate requirements and you have to take it away. Who is the appeal authority? By code, it is the council. So if I look backwards on the process, it really means to me that the council has real authority on this. And actually should be approving them through the contract and on appeals, that they, then they become the, the. The, the group, not the hearing examiner. That was another recommendation that the planning commission made, but by code. Under state law, that's really not an option. And the more we thought about it, we went back and forth on this several times, you're giving somebody a tax break. And is that something that the city staff should be approving? And the answer was no.
So what? So thank you for that. So what, what do other cities do?
According to the handbook, it's um a mix. And we, we see quite a few cities moving through the administrative process.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
It puts a lot of pressure on the city manager and the community development director, by the way.
I have some questions regarding the wisdom of a twenty-year credit. I don't know what the real estate market's gonna be five years from now, let alone twenty. I can guess at five years. Uh, I don't know what the federal tax structure is gonna be twenty years from now, certainly gonna be different. And I don't know what state and federal housing programs are gonna be in existence. Is it really, is there any? Evidence that this actually is a, going from twelve to twenty is a tipping point that would encourage anybody because. They're going off, they're going off a tax code and interest rates.
Yeah. It, my, my analysis, we put it in there, it's actually an optional element within the code. I don't think very many agencies are gonna use this. It's gonna be predominantly housing agencies, nonprofits. Something of that ilk, but I do not believe you're going to see many housing developers who do this for a living, wanting to take advantage of the twenty-year. Basis. That might be something that the council will want to remove from the, from the ordinance. But we put it in there so that you were aware that it's out there if you want to use it.
Thank you. So. And why wouldn't they use it? Because. Housing.
Uh, well, I'm, I'm not aware of anyone who has used it yet, okay? It's been out there for a rea- a short period of time. Uh, we can check to see if, if there are that many. We would have to go back through the Department of Commerce and take a look at their records. But usually too, it takes some time for these projects to bubble through. You know, you know, we approved our ordinance in two thousand two. We didn't see our first development until two thousand six. So by the time you go through all the, the hoops, the, the other thing I would say is, is that I think it's for a limited market. For a small group of individuals who would like to think about it. The reason we kind of stuck it in should say, for example, Habitat for Humanity come in with a project and they want to take advantage of it. It's there and we don't have to go back and amend the code, and you still have the right to say no.
I want to queue in on something you just said. So Habitat for Humanity came in with these new regulations, they'd have to have a minimum of fifteen units, right, to qualify?
If this ordinance is adopted, yes.
Okay, and then. I want to understand the process, so uh the developer says, I want to build some uh affordable housing. Being said, low income or moderate income, right? Uh, and they want to apply for a tax exemption for eight, twelve, or twenty years. When that comes in and comes to council, is there an economic impact analysis done to say, hey, we're foregoing this many years of property taxes? But in doing so, we're providing housing, which is important to us, uh, and the influx and people potentially give us more sales taxes. And the surrounding area may also go up in value, driving up those property taxes. Uh, is that sort of analysis done as things come in?
There is a financial analysis prepared by staff that talks about how this actually works. From the, from the beginning of the conditional certificate all the way through. It shows uh, uh, utility taxes, uh, all the fees for building permits and stuff like that, and it kind of goes up. Then it goes down and then, and, and stays down for a period of up, up to usually eight years. And then all of a sudden it goes back up.
Okay, that makes sense.
So we, we do that analysis. There is this handbook that's available online. Other cities do the analysis as well.
Okay, just remember the eight years doesn't come with a quote-unquote affordable housing component. That can be market rate. Okay, yeah, it's mostly to incentivize them to come in and do some project.
Okay, and then you mentioned that of the six hundred and fourteen units that have been through this process, only about ten percent are considered affordable now?
We have a fifty-unit project that's in the Lakeview neighborhood where twenty percent of that fifty units would be set aside for low and or moderate income. And they have yet to start, and right now they're uh probably having some financing questions because of the, the rise in interest rates. So I wouldn't be surprised if they would come in and request an extension. But, but I also want to be very clear, this is just like any other development. You come in, you start with a pre-app. If you're gonna do a pre-app, we want to know right then and there, what are, what is it that you're looking for? And then we, we start talking about if you're gonna do the set aside, you know, this is a type of deed restriction that you are going to be required to sign. You are going to have to have some sort of notification every year to the city and any change in tenants. And what their income levels are, and you have to file that with the city. Is that something that you really want to do for a fifteen-year project? Or twelve-year, whatever it might be. It's not something that most of our developers in this area do well. Let me put it to you that way. I'm not trying to be offensive, but this is not easy. It's not easy on us. And Becky will probably allude to it a little bit later, but we've come up with a way of reducing our costs.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, the final item I wanted to bring to your attention on the recommendations is uh number nine. And that we're recommending, once the twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan, as well as the, our periodic review. And the updated telecom plans are completed, consider expanding the uh to additional RTAs. Potentially, uh, what you might want to consider now, though, is since we do have the um CBD RTA. And the Lakewood Station District RTA, it may be a good time to expand the RTAs. To uh be the same as the zoning boundaries, so that's an option. To uh, be the same as the zoning boundaries. So that's an option that um, we think would be. A reasonable to do at this time uh, and fairly simple for us to update those maps. So that is something we wanted to bring to your attention. Um, and then the final item, um, I just wanted to mention that we will be going to public hearing November sixth. And we will include a copy of the sample contract that we would use uh, for the program for that. Those are the recommendations that I wanted to highlight for you this evening.
One of the questions I had is on item nine there. The consideration of expanding the RTA areas to include Tilikum, Lakeview and other quote unquote multifamily areas close to commercial districts. You know, one wonders, why not make the whole place an RTA? Right? If you're trying to incentivize projects. Uh, because. Lakewood has not seen a plethora. Multi-family projects, especially mixed-use multifamily projects, right?
I, I would only just be a little careful as we get into the whole topic of middle missing, how that could. Get interweaved into multifamily tax exemption. And, and um, just think it through as long as I'm asking.
Yeah, I am trying to think through that through. How would that be an impediment or disincentive to that?
Well, first of all, so far the, the, the process has been, we want to, you know. Put, you know, place the development in the, the downtown, the central board. So if you expand it to a larger area. You're going to probably see other projects. Now Tacoma basically has a lot for nodes all over the place. And then some places are, are subject to. Uh, MFTE provided they do a different design standards which have yet to be developed. So, you know, you have, you know, that kind of approach. One of the big issues that we are struggling with, which is before the planning commission Wednesday evening, is what parking looks like under this new code. And if you're proposing ADUs, there's not much requirement for parking. Uh, if you propose. Certain development in certain parts of the city, there's no requirement for parking. And with our existing street pattern, we are very concerned that this may not work. So. If you are going to do MFTE, I, in other locations, one of the things we keyed off and it's in the ordinance. Is you have to comply with certain parking standards, period. And, and that is done on purpose because if we go with what the state is imposing, I do believe over the long term it's going to have some. Uh, impacts to, to certain neighborhoods. So it's. The short answer is, if you're going to do it, make sure you're covered with design and parking.
Got it. Of course, it makes more sense as we have designed it to be in the central business district, close to transit, those kinds of things. Services, et cetera. Okay, any other questions? A lot of work on this, very interesting.
I'm gonna bring this up so that you know. When a person comes in to give us their final report, which is due to the state by March first. April first, April Fool's Day, we're not fooling. You're actually gonna be required as a condition of approval to submit to the city a CPA report. That lists out the requirements and how you met those criteria. So that, and, and it's certified so that when we get that, we don't have to spend a lot of time going through this.
Great. So this is uh, another uh, serendipity that we're providing CPAs in town more economic opportunities.
We certainly are.
Yeah, good, that's good. Very good. Well, thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, looks like uh, we have Ms. Spear to come on board to tell us a little bit about the long range and strategic. Plan with regard to the twenty twenty three annual development regulation code amendments. And I think she's probably appearing via Zoom, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm.
Great.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me all right? Can you hear me? Are you able to hear me?
Uh, it's a little faint.
Okay, one second.
Is that any better? Can you hear me?
It got worse, Tiffany.
Okay, just one moment.
There we go.
Better?
Yes, better, thank you.
Apologies for that. Tiffany Spear on behalf of Long Range and Strategic Planning here to talk about. Um, the annual development regulations package that is in front of you. Uh, next week for public hearing and action potentially on uh, November twentieth. So I'll just walk through these through a, a shared presentation. Sorry, there we go. So uh, again, this is the twenty twenty three annual development regulation package. These are based on uh. Information that comes to the city over a year from applicants or from staff's own experience with code. It is in reaction to uh, state law changes sometimes. And it is also in reaction to uh, things that may come from uh, the applicants that work with the jurisdiction over the year to. Uh, um, offer suggestions or their experiences with code where there maybe need to be some changes. In twenty twenty three, there are twelve that are uh, proposed and in front of you this evening. There was a public hearing at the planning commission on uh, in September and then on October fourth, the planning commission adopted its resolution. Which was part of your package this evening. And uh, as I mentioned, there is action scheduled for council on November twentieth. So I'm gonna walk through the twelve and I'll just preface by saying that the first ten. Did not receive any reaction or comment. Um, amendment eleven had support. And then amendment twelve is where most of the effort and discussion at planning commission was focused. The first ten are basically technical changes, if you will. Uh, but they are again in reaction to code cleanup need or feedback from either applicants or city staff working with the code over the last year. So the first is to permit uh, standalone truck and trailer parking within International Business Park. Industrial one and industrial two. Amendment two is to allow electric fencing in the commercial zones and the transit oriented commercial zone. And this is uh, in reaction to uh, an increase in stolen vehicles uh, and vehi- vehicle dealerships essentially asking for this. The third is to define unusual use and just make sure it's very clear what that is meant in the code. It is not an unusual permit. It is a use that is unanticipated in code. The fourth is to correct some inconsistencies between two titles of the Lake of Municipal Code seventeen and eighteen A. Regarding uh, binding site plan amendments, plat alterations and short plat amendments. The fifth is to consolidate sign permit administration regulations uh, all into one place. So rather than having it uh, in two spots of title eighteen A, it moves it into one. Number six is to update the timeframes uh, for CIPA and land use decisions to be consistent with state law. The seventh is to explain what is a flexed space and that that is referring to building type and not the use within it. The eighth amendment is again redundancy removal. There is reference in code right now to both. Uh, mobile home or manufacturer, manufactured homes and then also mobile home manufactured home parks. So just again, consolidating those into a single area of code. The ninth. Amendment is to update the mixed residential to lot size standards to clarify and organize those. And taking out uh, the two, or excuse me, for two or more units threshold and leave it as three thousand gross square feet. And the tenth is to clarify, um, I think you as council know this over time that uh, according to the. Uh, ACUB or air installation um, compatible use. Uh, regulation or, or language from the Department of Defense and FAA, there is the accident potential zones near McCord Field. But in the city zoning code, there's air corridor one and air corridor two. So just clarifying when each term is correctly used within our code. The eleventh amendment relates to expanding where commercial childcare facilities would be allowed within the city of Lakewood's land use zones. Um, this is in response to information that's been gathered not only through SSMCP research, but others across the country about. What are now being termed childcare deserts, um, somewhat similar to the term food deserts that you may have heard in the past. Uh, right now, there are areas within Lakewood that are classified as being a childcare desert. And by making these changes, those would be eliminated. What's being proposed is to expand uh, childcare facilities to be allowed within the residential zone, one through four. Multifamily three, neighborhood commercial one and two, transit oriented commercial and central business district zones outright. And then also allow them through a conditional use in the ARC or arterial residential commercial and then the commercial three zones. This map shows you where the blue dots are, where there are uh, would have been classified as childcare deserts. Um, by childcaredeserts.org, which had did uh, an analysis in the city of Lakewood as part of a statewide review. And as you notice here in Lakeview and Springbrook, uh, there are childcare deserts in some of the. Uh, most stressed areas of the city as well as other parts where the blue dots are located. So again, if this amendment were to go forward, you would allow uh, the commercial childcare. Facilities throughout the city except for mixed residential one and two, which are those lighter orange colors. Multifamily one and two, the medium and darker brown. The clear zone and air corridor zone, again, that's public safety, public institutional, industrial, and then the open space areas. Wherever the child, commercial childcare locations would be, you still would have. All the regulation that would apply to them. So they would be seeking business licensing and would have to comply with development and site. Development um, requirements in code.
Ms. Spear, real quick on that. Maybe I'm miss thinking this, but it seems counterintuitive. You wouldn't allow childcare facilities and mixed. Residential or multifamily.
Those were decisions, I'm not sure if Mr. Buie can help me here, but um, those zones were uh, discussed between current planning. And uh, Mr. Buie to make that choice, so.
I, I cannot recall. We're gonna have to come back to the councils.
I can certainly send, provide that information before the public hearing.
Yeah, I'd share that concern because it seems like it's a natural for multi, a multifamily. Mixed use where you have onsite childcare. Uh, childcare, some of the most advanced childcare in the, in the world is in Sweden and they're integrated into neighborhoods. Where the neighborhood can all walk to the childcare and goes actually farther to go to school. So it's counterintuitive. There may be a reason, but I can't think of it.
I will provide that information to you before the public hearing. And then um, the final amendment is the one that, as I mentioned before, had the most discussion at the planning commission and is actually in front of you this evening. Based on their resolution with one recommendation that the uh, department is actually not agreeing with. So. This would uh, change no matter what, the regulations for accessory dwelling, dwelling units by adding some uh, definitions. That were provided from state law this year. And then what the department had recommended to the planning commission was to actually just recommend prohibition. Of accessory dwelling units in the city being used as short-term rentals. The reasoning behind this is under House Bill thirteen thirty seven. Um, there is now a requirement to allow at least two accessory dwelling units on most of the residential, meaning R one to R four. Uh, lots throughout the city. And, and as resulting concern from the department regarding uh, street use and parking in particular, which was. A little bit of what Mr. Buie was referring to a few moments ago. State law explicitly allows local governments to prohibit ADUs to be used as short-term rentals. Um, however, when the conversation was had with the planning commission, the vote was ultimately for um. Supportive of allowing short-term rentals in ADUs, one that opposed that and one that recused himself with one member absent. So the way the recommendation came to you from the planning commission would allow uh, accessory dwelling units to be used as short-term rentals. Just a quick refresher on House Bill thirteen thirty seven, which is the new requirement for where ADUs have to be able to go. Um, there needs to be at least two on all lots within a min- with the minimum lot size. Uh, they can be attached or detached. They can be inside of a structure or attached to it. Um, there is a limiting of parking requirements as well as public street improvements when ADUs are involved. So thirteen thirty seven actually prohibits public street improvements as a condition for ADU approval. It limits parking requirements to one per ADU if the lot is under six thousand square feet. And limits it to two spaces for larger lots. And it also prohibits requiring off-street parking as a condition to permit ADUs within a half a mile of the major transit stop. So actually, let me stay here just a moment.
Ask you a quick question?
Please.
So. There's a recommendation here about short-term rentals too, and I, I know that. Anecdotally, there are folks who may have an ADU. Uh, in the community as a short-term rental. If it has onsite parking. Would that be problematic based upon the recommendations as opposed to requiring off? Street parking, or I mean, off-site parking on street, in other words.
If you are on a lot that is outside of half mile of a major transit stop. You are um, limited as a jurisdiction to say. If the lot is under six thousand square feet, you can have, uh, you can only require one space per ADU. If you are on a lot larger than six thousand square feet, you can require two spaces for uh, the larger lots. However, if you are within half a mile of a major transit stop regardless of the lot size. You are A, uh, required to allow uh, again, the same number of ADUs, so at least two. But B, no uh, off-street parking is allowed to be required. Sorry, that came out a little awkward. You, you can't require parking for ADUs within half a mile, off-street. So off-street is the same as onsite.
Got it.
So we did, did a quick look at within the city's residential areas where uh, R one through R four is located. And uh, that's this golden area on this map. And the red. Uh, lines that you see are the public rights of way that are under sixty feet in width. And the reason we did this is the, the department was concerned about how parking on street, the pressure may increase and also. If it did and you were outside of that half mile of your. Major transit stop. Where would people try to park? Um, if they had an ADU then and were not allowed to require onsite parking. And so what you see are areas in uh, what is mostly. R three, maybe some R four on the west side of the city. And then up in the northern part of the city where you have R one and R two, there's some R three is there as well. Uh, and so all of these areas, the right of way is less than the current city's street. Design standard requires. Meaning there's not room for the way the city would require a road to be built to include. Uh, not just not parking, we're not talking parking, but the, the way it is designed right now, either a fifty or a sixty foot width is required. For roadway, uh, automotive transport and then non-motorized movement. It does not include parking in any of those designs. So again, looking at, go ahead.
Tiffany, can. Is there a prohibition, but you know, right now, what if we, we divide up a property, three or more lots, you've got to do the. Curb gutter sidewalk improvements. Is, is there a prohibition against requiring? Curb gutter sidewalk. To build an ADU?
Right here. Prohibits the, oops, sorry, prohibits the requirement for public street improvements. So my answer to you would be that that would not be allowed for an ADU. So where we're at as a.
Mile or anywhere.
That's anywhere.
Has there been any challenge, other ones? Has there been any challenge or discussion of a challenge of? That. The half mile within. The definition of what public transportation really is because we don't have. Because we don't have public transportation in Pierce County that goes where people need to go. And we're not going to get it under the present tax structure. And so it's unrealistic to impose the Seattle standard on Pierce County. And second, under that, what are what are the sanctions if we go against the state requirement and actually say, we want a curb gutter sidewalk? Uh we require an off street parking. Aside from somebody who wants to develop challenging us and perhaps winning, we can always roll. What sanctions would there be? Puget Sound Regional Councils tell us we have to build ten thousand more units or?
I'll go ahead and start the answer to that question by saying that potentially Puget Sound Regional Council could come back and say that you're not eligible for federal transportation dollars. That's the first thing that comes off the top of my head. We've had lots of discussion about this internally. Uh one of the topics is is this goes back to the whole concept of middle missing housing. Uh does the city of Lakewood already provide middle missing housing? And some of us can answer that question by saying yes. So thank you, the state of Washington, for making these provisos to help us get there, but we think we already are. And then not move forward with some of the stuff that is being requested or required by the state of Washington. We haven't gotten to that point yet. Right now, the Planning Commission is talking about this whole parking issue and middle missing housing Wednesday evening. It is a topic that's going to come back to the city councils apart of your twenty twenty four update. You're going to have an opportunity to think about this before we get into the hearing process. But for now, what what I'm seeing as, you know, a po- potential issue would be a challenge before the growth hearings board. And a challenge before PSRC because they would probably not certify our comprehensive plan. Let me add a few more things. We're also working on some reports to Department of Commerce that say we we are being challenged by these requirements. And we have underlying situations that are unique. You know, Tiffany showed the map of streets are under sixty, uh do not meet city standards. We also have a problem with private roads. You add the two together and then it does impose some restrictions on development. And then we have ongoing issues with sewers and water issues as well. So when we put, we start putting this package together, you know, there are some impediments that will not help us get there. One of, one of the biggest things that's that I am concerned with is no parking in Lakewood Station District. Our parking, our street standards are terrible down there and they've been deficient for years. But there is no state grants available to fix residential streets. So how are we supposed to provide for parking? If the state's saying, you know, you have to rely up, you know, if the state's saying that's not going to be required in these transit oriented areas. So it's confusing to us. It has made the administration of the code much more difficult now than ever before. So we're struggling with this. We are probably going to put some reports together to the Department of Commerce and say we have underlying issues that we're not ne- necessarily able to resolve right now. But your big issue is is lack of federal transportation dollars. And and we do have several council members who have been up before PCRC. And this comes up on on a frequent basis. Tiffany, did I miss anything? Or anything you want to add?
No, I would just bring us back to what this topic is this evening, which is short term rentals and ADUs. And try to keep the parking conversation a little down the line, if that's possible. Um because it is a much larger discussion that um takes us away from the annual development regulation package. So um the way Mr. Buie explained it is true, we would be subject to um non compliance of uh with Vision twenty fifty, so no certification by PSRC. Um the potential for challenge should the uh comprehensive plan itself not incorporate these things as is required uh by state law because GMA is reflecting all of these things now. Um I don't know if there is anything in the current um A W C or uh Association of Counties legislative plans to challenge or request clarification on this bill or eleven ten in this coming session. Uh that's a possibility, but I'm not aware of anything moving forward yet. Uh I would assume over time, there will be challenge, whether it be by local government or by property owners, but as of now, um these are the rules and they are mandatory uh under this bill.
Thank you for putting me back on track, Tiffany.
Um so unless there's other other questions about uh the road widths, where we are coming from as well as a department is that House Bill thirteen thirty seven, the state legislature explicitly allowed um local governments to prohibit the use of accessory dwelling units as short term rentals. Uh anticipating that uh by doing so, you may be affecting the rental market uh by removing uh uh units off of um the roles for longer term rentals. But you're also delaying the creation of long term rentals, which is the whole point of thirteen thirty seven. The idea behind that bill, along with eleven ten, was in part to say rather than continue to require additional land for more housing units, we're coming at this and from the context of let's put more units per lot and get them built quickly, right? Let's go vertical more quickly. And so if you allow ADUs as short term rentals, you're delaying the point of why these are allowed in the first place. So uh in addition, what you have quoted here, Department of Commerce recommended against having local government in areas with high demand for short term rentals to allow them and and really to take some time to decide if you wanted to go down that route, or if you wanted to prohibit ADUs to be used as short term rentals. So once more, um where we sit right now is you have a recommendation from the Planning Commission on approval of all of these amendments. Uh you did have in your uh materials for this evening, a breakdown of the positions from each of the Planning Commission members about amendment twelve. And so it explains their thought process behind the recommendation to allow them to be short term rentals. And then you have uh November sixth, again, the public hearing and November twentieth, action on the development regulations. So I'm happy to answer any further questions that you may have.
Any questions? Other than the potential policy issue on the short term rentals, I'm just trying to get my head around that because you you're grappling with the policy of encouraging ADU development vis a vis the hypothetical postulation that short term rentals would preclude longer term housing options. I'm just not sure that's the case. So are we getting some some data to support that from the the P RAB and the recommendation, or is this just speculation on their part?
The Planning Commission's um reasoning. And you do have some members who have some sort of involvement with the real estate industry or land development industry and experience there, but those that were um supportive of the idea of short term rentals in ADUs essentially said, if you want these ADUs to be built at all, you need to make sure that the people trying to build them will be able to see a profit quickly. And by by allowing them to be short term rentals, at least at the start, that will be more likely. They will be more likely to to rent something as a short term rental, maybe faster than they would a long term rental. So whether that premise is true or not, that that is the position that they took. And then the decision would come for that property owner. If time goes by and they aren't renting it as a short term rental, they would make the decision to change it into a long term permanent rental, or they would be selling it actually uh kind of in a condo situation where it becomes um a a dwelling unit that's actually owned by somebody else on that lot.
Okay, but I guess I thought the recommendation was to not allow short terminals at all, Brady use.
This, this is the city's recommendation. The city is is disagreeing with Planning Commission.
Okay. Why? Unless it increases traffic, in other words, if they had to park on the street or those kinds of things.
Those are, that's part of it, but the the other aspect is this is this short term rentals is going to create additional housing or not. The feeling from the staff was is that if you're going to do short term, if you're going to do ADUs, let's provide housing first. I guess that's the simple, that's the simple rationale.
I get it, but I'm going to push back and say they're the ones taking the risk, making the investment on their property, subject to reasonable rules. I get it. Uh and 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 we're the ones saying it ain't good enough because you're not providing quote unquote, long term housing.
Every city council that has this cover for them has the same arguments back and forth.
Why will one be disagreeing with staff's recommendation on that? Mr. Bokey?
Well, I appreciate the laissez faire attitude of the mayor and the planning commission. And I would, I would usually follow that along too, but actually there's increasing evidence nationwide that this is a actually a very large contributor in some cities to the housing shortage and and I and I haven't read any of the articles, but New York apparently is the next one to crack down because they're literally keeping tens of thousands of units off the market. So so it's all well and good if you're renting the unit and making money off it. We're renting both the house and the ADU and making money off it. Great. Um but if you're the neighbor and it becomes a party house or something like that, that's a problem. So and then there, and then the other thing that came out in this was they're not regulated at all by us, right? We don't have a business license. We don't get LTAC. I don't believe I'm looking at Mr. Viewer. So it's, it is right now laissez faire. I mean, it is, it is for whatever reason we treat them as an exemption to any law. And so, so um yeah, I I I never made up my mind on a ban because I don't know that we have enough of them to worry about. We're not a tourist destination. So I don't, I don't know. I'm I'm not going to try to sell you on that. But I I I think at a minimum if it 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 we we need to start getting LTAC, we needed to have a business license, we need to know who the owner is. We so when neighbors complain, we can take action. Um and and if we're unwilling to do that, then we we just need to do a ban then, right? So it's one or the other, is what in my mind.
Yeah, I agree with him. Yeah, I think if it's a business, you should have a business license. Yeah, Mr. Mr. Bureau.
Your current code requires the business license and also an inspection by the fire fire marshal to make sure that the building meets minimum fire requirements. It is difficult to track these. Okay, uh we do believe that we have about a hundred and eighty six in the city of Lakewood. And then with the state allowing for more ADUs, potentially exists for a large number. And that the Airbnb's and the like, the way in which they're advertised are pretty sneaky about it. And so the only way in order to stay on top of it is we've talked to several uh software vendors that are to uh provide information on where these facilities are. And then if that's something that we're going to do in the future, move forward with enforcement through CSRT. Now, the the city manager is tentatively authorized. When I recall these expenditures for this, we just haven't moved forward yet.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Well, yeah, I I'm opposed to uh banning uh I'm in favor of regulating. And and if, and we need to do that. Uh in industry riot, uh the short term rental market is collapsing. And it's a function of the market. People are overextended. The interest rates are up. You can't lease and resell. People expanded too far. Places regulated it. Well, what what's left when they collapse? Units. If they created units, there are now more housing units. So um they're just, they're renting it, but they're renting it at a higher price. They really aren't providing any service like a hotel would. So uh there's a place for them, but it isn't everybody's neighborhood. Uh it's, it it's going to it's going to shake out. And and I watch the rideshare industry uh attempt to correct itself. And when government gets involved trying to protect the taxi industry or whatever, they just seem to mess it up more. But it does a pretty good job of correct, market does a pretty good job of correcting itself. And it seems that that's happening with short term rentals. Uh the ones that are good tend to stay and the market's going to wean out uh the the fringes. And in that process, I think we're going to have more housing units because people are going to be incentivized to invest. Uh right now, the state of Washington has drastically changed, Tacoma's even considering more drastically changed the rules for rental housing. Disincentivizing people from from owning, building, maintaining rental houses here as much. If if I was to, I had a lot of rentals in the past, if I was to want to invest in rental housing today, I'd be buying units in Arizona and Nevada. I would not be buying a single unit in the state of Washington. Uh because it it's economically unfavorable to the landlord. Um that's not going to create more use. It's an unintended consequence of the legislatures and city council actions that are scaring away rental housing. Uh so I I don't, I'm really hesitant to do anything that would scare people away from investing. Because I have seen through my day job that when government tries to build an affordable unit, it costs at least a half million dollars. And then it's thirty thousand dollars a year to maintain it. Uh it makes no sense whatsoever from a taxpayer standpoint. So we've got to incentivize private enterprise whenever we can through the bricks and mortar of it.
I just want to follow up on a comment on that too. You know, I too, we see so many intrusions on property ownership and the ability to do reasonable development on one's property. So I I'm I'm against the outright ban. I'm fine with regulation. And and to your point, Mr. Bokey, I think one of the things that we don't perhaps recognize is most not saying all, but most housing that could support an ADU uh are are located within developments that have CCNRs. Most of the CCNRs that I've dealt with over the course of time internally have restrictions on short term rentals. So by contract, uh people in neighborhoods are restricting short term rentals, which I think is fine because you buy into it. You know what the covenants are and you know what the restrictions are. So uh to some extent, that is already existing, but I think business licensing and appropriate regulation amenities for traffic, you know, if you're going to have a quote unquote, short term rental, you gotta have parking onsite, not offsite or whatever, you know, whatever you think is appropriate, but outright bans, I think are problematic for the reasons Mr. Anderson indicated. And you look at this prop that's going on in downtown Tacoma now, it's going to further restrict, you know, the outcome is not, in my humble opinion, going to create more rental housing opportunities. It's going to create less. Because people are just tired of it. And I have, in my day job, I've had a lot of clients sell out their single family homes because they are tired of dealing with the hassle of owning a rental in the state of Washington, let alone Pierce County. And it's creating less housing, not more.
So New York's short term rental regulations are licenses for short term rental hosts, banned whole home rentals and limited guests to two per reservation. So two seems low to me, but see, that isn't made. New York listings dropped a staggering seventy seven percent from an estimated twenty thousand in June to just forty six hundred in September. So I I I don't know that I agree with all those, but I do think we need a license. We do need to get LTAC. And we we might do a guest limitation, but I I wouldn't recommend to.
Mr. Florso.
I had a terminology question. Uh so there are a couple of bills that passed in the last session, right? Eleven ten allowed multiple uh I primary or multiple dwelling units on a property versus Uh, I have primary or multiple dwelling units on a property versus thirteen thirty seven was ADUs. What's the difference between a second normal unit and a second ADU?
Um, ADUs predated the term middle housing.
Mr. Spirit, do you have the cogent answer to that?
Uh, I, I'm not hearing everything that's being said in the council chambers, I'm sorry. Uh, the. Term middle housing is a relatively recent one for state law and state definitions. Accessory dwelling units have been around longer. And in fact, accessory dwelling units are one type of the middle housing definition. Middle housing is a broader definition, it's everything from duplex to tri quad, five and six plexes, it's condos, it's townhomes. And it can include accessory dwelling units. ADUs um prior to the whole discussion that the state is having right now about housing densification on lots. Uh, was, you know, kind of one on a lot in some places of a city if the council wanted to allow that. Uh, it wasn't necessarily a, you have to do it everywhere city, it was where the city had. Uh, a desire to promote that type of housing densification. We're now in a situation with state law changes to where a jurisdiction has to allow, not require. That somebody go build it, but they have to allow the choice of the property owner to do middle housing. Uh, what translates into all of uh Lakewood's residential one through four zones. And then because of the way we define our land use zones, the accessory dwelling units also would be allowed in what we call arterial residential commercial. Which is a very small number of acres, it's about twenty three acres in the city, but otherwise it would be in the same places as our R one through our four zones. So yes, it's confusing, no, you're not the only one to think so. ADUs are within the middle housing definition, but they do apply in a slightly different place under these two bills.
But I think Mr. Flores's question was size, is there a material difference between the size of an ADU and a quote unquote second single family home on your lot? They can both be a thousand or whatever.
Yes.
So from what I'm reading of thirteen thirty seven, one of the things that says that local governments may not require ADUs to be. Smaller than a thousand gross feet in size, so the size restriction no longer exists for ADUs.
Well, our current code allows ADUs up to a thousand square feet.
And then the new regulations from thirteen thirty seven say that's no longer valid.
So in other words, you're saying an ADU could be twelve hundred and fifty square feet or fifteen hundred and called an ADU? On a single panel.
Check on that.
It, it does allow more freedom in the size.
A difference, yes.
I'm sorry, it does allow more freedom in the size of ADUs to the benefit of more square footage, provided the lot size itself. Would allow for that, so it's still governed to some extent by the size of the lot.
So feedback on his question, could the city code be more restricted than the state law? It could be, right?
It currently is, yeah, yeah. We, I don't know yet.
Excellent discussion.
One, one thing I will bring to your attention that we didn't bring up and seems to get missed when we start, start talking about ADUs, but say I have a house. I live in that house, I build an ADU. I rent to a renter and things don't go well. And now I am su- having to deal with a tenant landlord act and my renter is in my backyard. You know, I don't think people have all, thought all this through about what the implications are when it comes to ADUs and the tenant landlord act.
Yeah, well, I'll give you a worst story on a recent, you're exactly right, there are complications, so it's, you know, enter with your eyes wide open. I had in my day job, a client who was a developer who bought. A, a house in a local jurisdiction. Uh, that had advertised at the lower unit as an ADU because it was a single family home and had a basement. Separate unit that this flipper had developed into quote unquote an ADU. Uh, unfortunately, the buyer uh didn't review local code for that jurisdiction. And that code required that it must be at least owner occupied. He thought he was buying two units where he didn't have to occupy one in order to invest. And ran out to both, so we got them leased up. Long term leases uh in the ADU. And then the renter raised a fuss about some sort of landlord tenant issue, right? Whether it was a smoke alarm or some crazy thing and uh. Got pissy with landlord, alerted the jurisdiction that gee, my landlord isn't being responsive, the jurisdiction came out and said. This can't be an ADU because you're not owner occupying the upper floor. So we're gonna red tag this and um you have to force this person to move. Oh, and by the way. Now you gotta give this person relocation assistance. He had to buy out the lease, pay for relocation assistance, so that very, very uh. Interesting acquisition turned out to be a very expensive mistake. Yep, Mr. Anderson.
We had that. We didn't have a problem, but in the olden days, when things were a little more landlord friendly, we bought a duplex and moved into one side. This first place we own and it's very, very important to us as to who we selected to live next door to us. Seattle has an ordinance which their legislature is likely to propagate across the state. Which says essentially that you have to. Rent to the first qualified person and they just define that very loosely. If they're walking, breathing and they have half of the deposit, they're qualified. It's almost that bad. And so you have to accept. The disheveled, bad credit. Previously been evicted tenant that wants to live in the other side of your duplex or in your ADU. I mean, that's really how far it's gone. Uh, so it's a huge risk. And so I, I, I think we're gonna have. One of the out, outcomes is we're gonna have more people complaining, the city to help us. And not being particularly happy with the official position that it's a civil matter.
Anyway. Really interesting stuff. And we're all grappling with, right? The housing piece.
Yeah, we, we felt like the other these amendments, the last one, the short term rentals was going to be the one that would be, create the most discussion. Remainder are pretty simple and straightforward, but this one is a big public policy. Issue, so. And I appreciate the conversation this evening and, you know, we'll work towards the ordinance after the public hearing. But what I'm hearing so far is no prohibition but regulation.
You know, unless you get incredible feedback at the public hearing where they want that, right? Then we'll certainly listen to the feedback.
And ironically, in my private gated development with private roads. Our covenants allow an ADU because they have big lots, but I don't think zoning does, but they probably don't allow short term rentals, but.
I bet they wouldn't allow short term rental of the ADU in the DARE.
No, yeah.
Same with ours. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering if um maybe we can work with the city manager because given the conversation this evening and the requests for some of the information. I'm not sure that we'll be able to turn uh everything around in a week. So hopefully um we might reschedule this to a public hearing on the twentieth of November and move it further out if that's all right. We'll work with the city manager for that.
I don't think there was a ton of requests, I think there was more discussion on the last proposed.
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with the public hearing. On, on November the sixth, uh, uh, as to. The outcome of the ordinance, you know, I'll, I'll speak with the city attorney on that. If we need to continue the public hearing, that's something that we can also do.
I defer to my boss.
Sounds good. Thank you again, we appreciate the work, Miss Spear, I mean, there's a lot of work going into it, it's complicated and uh important. So thanks again for all you're doing for us.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Viewer, thank you for coming. Okay, so that ends the items for discussion, but are there further reports, Mr. Coffield, or further comments you wish to make? I'm sorry I asked, but.
You, you had your chance, Mayor, you could have just said moving on to council comments.
You're right.
So um, a, a, a few updates, um, it's kind of tentative, it's all dependent on weather, um, just wanted to note that. We could be scheduling a ribbon cutting event for the Washington Boulevard project. Completion of that on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, which is November twenty second, that's the targeted date to reopen. That whole um, that whole roadway, but again, it's all weather dependent. A ribbon cutting event, that's correct. On the twenty second, that's correct. So that's what we're currently shooting for, just to, just to give you a courtesy heads up. Um, also that contractor, Aaliyah, they um, they um are the lowest bidder. We're checking to see if they're the most responsive bidder, we expect them to be on the Ardmore Whitman Ninety Third Street Transportation Project that bids were open last week. It was really interesting, um, it was like, there was ten bidders, which is a bit unusual for a project of this size and scope. And what we're hearing is that the construction community, it's, it's kind of opposite what we thought it was, um, they're really, really hungry and aggressive for work. As a matter of fact, our project came in over six hundred thousand dollars under the engineer's budget and. Um, over seven hundred thousand dollars under uh the budget itself, so we got some really, really good bids. But what Aaliyah wants to do is they want to finish up the Washington Boulevard project as quickly as possible. Again, by Thanksgiving, so then they can roll in and start this project. Um, coming up right behind this project, um, going out in the street here very shortly will be Hipkins. Road and that's a partnership with the Lakewood Water District because they'll be installing a water main there, followed by the infill sidewalk projects on Far West. Followed by the sidewalk and traffic intersection improvements at eighty fourth and Pine Street, um, including the entrance into Ward's Lake Park. So those are the next um major uh projects that are coming up, so just wanted to give you a heads up and um particularly on the Hipkins. Um, given what we just saw. On the Ardmore Whitman Ninety Third um street project, we are expecting competitive bids on that as well, so that's. We were a little concerned that inflation was really gonna be hurting us, um, but the competitiveness seems to be outweighing that, so that's a, that's a, that's a good thing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bokey.
I will contrast that with a, uh, I don't know if Mr. Anderson was listening today, a, a call with a legislative delegation. And the state has some mega project in Seattle and it was seventy. Percent over budget? Something like that, yeah. It was, and, and they're, they're just in shock, right? Because it's gonna, the, the ripple effects of that are. Are really tough, they, they're trying to figure it out, I don't even know if they're gonna accept that bid, but it was, it was a huge project and it came in seventy percent. Over, so, good, good for you guys.
Well, we're gonna try and ride this wave as long as we possibly can. Um, we're also gonna be moving forward with uh our uh, um, every two year community satisfaction survey. Um, we're gonna be embarking on that uh be middle, end of November and we hope to have the presentation of those results to you, the latter part of, of March. And last year, um, as part of the previous survey, the council asked us to double down on. The um total sample size, so we have gone ahead and done that as well, so we'll even have a more accurate. Um, statistically accurate survey on that as well, so just wanted to share that with you. Um, also some kind of cool news, our Parks and Recreation Director, Mary Dawsworth. Uh, recently met with um a former Seattle Seahawk player, wide receiver Doug Wal- Baldwin, you might remember him not too long ago, um, doing some. Uh, great things for the Seattle Seahawks. Well, he had, um, he's, he's been partnering with the city of Renton. Um, with a organization that he has to bring essentially a multi-generational center to uh the city of Renton with a focus on youth. And um, so long story short, he heard about Lakewood and Ms. Dawsworth met with him and um. He's really impressed with what's going on down here and so there could be an opportunity for him to perhaps bring. His foundation here to Lakewood and uh we'll see, kind of see where it goes. Uh, he also has good connections with a number of other former Seahawks in this area, including um Jerome Cur- um Kersey. Who is a graduate of Lakes High School and as you know, the council recognized a number of years ago as well, so. So again, we don't know where it's gonna go, um, but again, just wanted to alert the council that. Uh, we are getting some interest from some um really active individuals in our, in our, in our community. Um, the Edgewater um master plan update, so that meeting last Tuesday evening uh went very, very well. Mary Dawsworth, your Parks and Recreation Director, did an outstanding job, she had a team of, of staff there as well as of course the P RAB board. Uh, the, the, the um event consisted of an overview and history. Of what's happened at the park since the city incorporated in nineteen ninety six, which other than some planning, really not much and some minor work around the boat launch. Um, all the public comment that was provided was over sixty people that attended, by the way. Um, um, all the public comment was, was, was documented, there was some interactive activities where people had an opportunity to go around and. Visit different stations, if you will, and provide some feedback and input. Um, a lot of the uh feedback that came back and no surprise on this again, because the city has really not done any major investments down there since incorporation. You know, just lack of current maintenance, uh site security, um, some of the habitat issues, particularly the stumps that are in the water as you're trying to launch. Um, a boat, um, of course, traffic and parking down there and um just the launch use and kind of boat safety issues and, 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 and things along those lines. Um, also, one of the things that a lot of people were surprised was the maps that we had available showing the um. The encroachment into the public right of way, because even though the, because the roadway is very narrow down there, but the public right of way is actually pretty significant. So that was a bit of an eye opener um for people and so um again, um Ms. Dawsworth and her team, they have been able to um memorialize. Memorialize all of that and so the next step is those master plan update comments and feedback. Uh, we'll come back to your P RAB board as part of their January meeting, so and that'll be coming forward to this body. For your interview, review and consideration sometime in first or second quarter of, 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 of next year. Um, just some upcoming events, uh, November first, this Wednesday, um. The mayors of Pierce County, led by our own distinguished uh Mayor Ja- Jason Whalen, will be having a discussion with some state legislators regarding. Public safety and the letter uh that, that, that the city of Lakewood has took, taken the lead on developing. We have sixteen cities and towns that have signed on to it. A couple of more that are um waiting, uh not waiting rather, but kind of running it by internally with their organization to see if they can add their, their name as well, so um. Some good stuff there, uh myself and Deputy Mayor Moss, this afternoon, we attended an A W C event. Which included a number of cities from Pierce and Thurston County and I spoke to that, given that a number of them were there and also asked. Our A W C board member, the mayor of Ordin, who has signed this letter. Uh, to advocate strongly for public safety initiatives as the state legislature gets underway in two thousand twenty four. He did communicate that he had heard us, I believe, quote loud and clear on that, uh Deputy Mayor, so. Um, also in November sec, uh, the next day, November second in the morning from eight to ten AM. Um, SSMCP will be having their second um elected officials council and I know I sent out the agenda on that. Um, and uh that's gonna be a, a nice event because among other things, we're gonna be recognizing our own Bill Adamson. With uh an ADC, Association of Defense Communities uh Champions Award for everything that he has done in his role, leading AW. The leading SSMCP and everything that he's done for service members and their families and, 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 and the like. Um, November eleventh and twelfth, Saturday and Sunday, um, we have our community cleanup and if you have an interest in coming out and helping out, please let us know. Be more than happy to find a slot and a time for you. And um, and then later on in the month, on November twenty ninth. Uh, we'll have the flag changing ceremony for the Fallen Four over at the Blue Steel Coffee Company at eight in the morning. And then um all day on the November twenty ninth, we're gonna have the um annual Fallen Officer Food and Blood Drive. And so that'll be going all day on the twenty ninth as well. Um, on December sixth, we're gonna have our annual employee recognition event, it's over at Clover Park Technical College, the Rotunda, just like we had it the last couple of years. Or last year, because we had a break in that, and that'll be from eight AM to ten AM. So that is December sixth, which I believe is a Wednesday. So that is December sixth, which I believe is a Wednesday, if I am correct. It's a Wednesday. So with that, that's my report. It should be on your calendar. So it, then it will be shortly, we've asked to have it added on to your calendar.
Very good, thank you, any questions? Appreciate it, thank you very much. Okay, let's turn to council comments briefly, knowing that we do have a an executive session following this, Mr. Bokey. Nothing. Mr. Laura Selig.
I wanted to thank folks for coming in and explaining M F T E and A D U's and the new new state regulations that are coming in, it's it's really complicated, but I appreciate the patience as we seek to understand it. And then I also want to give a shout out to Mary Dawsworth for being a rock star in that Edgewater Park meeting. I had a chance to go listen to it afterwards, and it was it was very well run, and she kept people on track.
Good, what was your impression, we heard the city manager's comments, but what was your impression about the receptiveness to improvements in the park?
I think people were open to hearing what she had to say, and they were receptive to understanding what's been done, what can be done, and the city's overall strategy to get there, so I think it was positive.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Bokey, or excuse me, Ms. Bell.
Thank you, Mayor, I will piggyback on what Councilmember Laura Sal said, I also listened to it and watched it, and I thought that the, all of the staff ran the meeting wonderfully, they answered all the questions, it seems like people got really clear direction, and they were very clear that, yeah, if this is something that is gonna happen, we realize that it is a public space. But it needs to be up, kept up, it needs public safety, all the things that we've talked about, so. I think that it was a really good meeting, so I I I thought it was fabulous. And then tell everyone to please be safe tomorrow as you are trick or treating, because I know you will be there.
Yes. They'll take my mask off.
That's it, so that's it for me, thank you.
Mr. Anderson. Oh, pass. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I will just add to what the city manager has said, the trip to A W C today was awesome. The weather was beautiful for the drive, the leaves were colored, it was actually really beautiful. And you know, one of the things that I noticed as we went around and introduced ourselves was the fact that everybody talked about public safety. But I can tell you that our city manager expressed it quite elegantly, and and it got the point across, a lot of people understood. They wanted to say it, didn't say it, the city manager did a great job.
Good.
Pointing it out, how dangerous it is for our citizens and especially our seniors. And so it was, it was a good meeting, and I'm glad I was able to attend.
Very good, well, thank you for attending that. As the city manager indicated, I'll be attending the event on the first Wednesday, the first for the meeting. And then we've got the SSMCP meeting on Thursday, the second, so I will be attending that as well. And then in terms of activities this last week, I did attend, I was asked not to attend the P RAB meeting, so I dutifully didn't attend. But I did attend the Lake Silicon Improvement Club meeting later that week, and it was another audience filled with folks, similar folks to the one with regard to Edgewater Park. The focus of that meeting was about treatment of the lake and options for treatment of the lake and concerns over the the drop in the in the water volume. Not just on Silicon Lake, but around the the area. Weather related, of course, as we all know, but then the the meeting did kind of manifest into another session about Edgewater Park, I didn't stay for that portion of it. But I understand the comments were similar, so I'm thankful to hear that there's at least some recognition that there could be a positive path forward if it's done right and maintained, and that security is provided, so I think we all want that to happen in the best way possible for the residents here. So that's all I have on that, and in the absence of any alibi, we will then turn to recessing into executive session for approximately thirty minutes pursuant to R C W forty two thirty one ten one G to review the performance of a public official, city council is not expected to take action following this executive session other than to come back and adjourn this meeting. So with that, we shall be in recess, thank you.
But we don't all all of this stuff. We don't put numbers evaluated. So I think that and it only exists in one space.
Well, I feel bad. I have a text there. I don't want to call it. And he's looking at the net.
Oh, that's okay actually. It's not divorce this year. Not for me. Which is never actually. Which was really to tell. What that other policy that would call itself. That number seven said oh. Basically we won't do this. Or.
I just know it's always it's on here and it's like.
Okay yeah.
But then it's.
Right yeah so you really wanna just go over all that once we need to see what. Really should be more certain. That's oh yeah I also believe for divorce I'm pretty young about that if we want to blow up. It's not necessarily responsibility it's I and they can say that to the house at home. But all we do is make themselves sound even more like issues. Yeah no. Anyway.
We're getting.
You too. Yeah.